City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burrus.
Here.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Here.
Alderman Wynn.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Eight to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, October 20th, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements. Everybody, please go vote. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. A few items. First, I'd like to ask Joe McCray, our Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, to come up and talk about a new service we're providing the public.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, City Clerk Green and City Manager Wally Bobkowitz. Joe McCray, Director of Parks Rec Community Services, happy to be here this evening to announce or to allow my talented staff to announce our new smartphone app that's launching today. I have with me Karen Hawk, the Rec Center Manager of Levy and Ecology, Ray Dorner, Program Coordinator at Chandler, and Melissa Parker, our Special Projects Assistant. And at this time, I'm going to ask Ray to come up and give you all a sample of our app, which I hope everyone will download and give feedback and wait for future versions as well.
Two point O.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, City Manager Bobkowitz and City Clerk Green. As Joe mentioned, my name is Ray Dorner. I'm Program Coordinator at the Chandler Newburger Community Center. We're excited about this app and the ability for our residents and participants to find information quickly about our department from a mobile device. We believe that the app is important because, for a variety of reasons, including that it will help to connect our programs, facilities and events with our residents, provide instantaneous access to the most updated information, and also be able to share information with visitors to our city who might be interested in recreating in Evanston. As Joe mentioned, the app is currently live in both the Apple Store and at the Google Play Store. The easiest way to find it would just be to go to either one of those, search for Evanston Rec, and you'll be able to download our mobile app to both smartphones and also tablet devices. We highlighted a few of the tabs to give you an idea of the functionality of the app. So the first app or the first tab that we're showing is the Around Me tab, which basically utilizes your mobile device's GPS to help you find facilities, parks, lakefront locations that are nearest to your current location in the city. So in that tab, it can display the information in a couple different formats, both in a map format, which is the first screenshot, and also in a list format, which is the second screenshot. So if you were to select any one of the locations in the Around Me tab, it would bring up the third screenshot, which would be a place to get further information about that location. And then finally, from that location, as you can see at the bottom of the screenshot, you can actually directly call that facility, get driving directions to the facility, email and even visit the website for that facility. So it's a really great way to connect to all the facilities, parks, lakefront locations in the city. The second tab is a calendar tab. It allows us to be able to provide information about upcoming activities, open gyms, special events, festivals, open skating, items like that. So you'll see the first screenshot is actually is a list format, so you can view the calendar tab in two different ways, either in a list format or in a calendar layout, depending on which you prefer. So it's showing you the activities that are going on for today, Monday, October 20th. And then if you were to select one of those activities, it would bring up the second screenshot, which again gives you more details about that particular activity. And what's kind of interesting or neat is that if you were to push on that information icon, which has been circled, you can actually sync it directly to your mobile device's calendar. So it's a great way to be able to give yourself reminders about upcoming activities you may want to attend. In addition, the mobile app also has a notifications tab, which, you know, sends out push notifications that are sent directly to the mobile device that for anybody who's downloaded our app. There's multiple formats in which push notifications can be sent. The first screenshot is an example of just a straight text push notification, and the second screenshot is an example of a website redirect push notification. So the notification appears in your mobile device. If you were to push on that notification, it would actually redirect you directly to a website that we have selected. So if you want to tell people about an upcoming event or program and then allow them to get more information about it. In addition, another tab that we have is what we're calling our Featured Event or Program tab. It's going to be for an upcoming event or program that we're really wanting to highlight and allow people to find easily and get more information about it. So our first featured event is our is the Nutcracker on Ice event that's going on at the Robert Crown Center. It's the 40th anniversary of the event, so we felt like that was a great opportunity to highlight the many great years that they've done with that program. And it gives you very easy to find and a little bit more information about the upcoming program. Finally, how we're going to share, spread the word, share the information to everyone about the app being live is first and foremost, we're going to obviously communicate through our social media outlets, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, both through our department and also the city's accounts, include it in upcoming e-newsletters. I know that the Community Engagement Division's going to be working on press releases, obviously promote it at upcoming events for the Recreation Department. And including and also, we have a space set aside in our upcoming Winter and Spring Evanston Life magazine to communicate to everybody who gets that magazine about our mobile app. And finally, we wanted to take the opportunity also to thank Luke Stowe and the members of the Community Engagement Division, who have really been a great assistance in helping us to get this mobile app launched. So that's the end. Are there any questions?
How much did this cost?
Less than a thousand a year.
Less than a thousand a year.
Alderman Grover.
Wally asked my first question. My second is, can one link to social media directly from the information on the app?
Yes, it can. So one of the tabs on-
So you can send emails with links to events. Can you tweet things from the app?
You can. So you can connect with our social media. There is a Share This App tab, and there's also places in which you can share comments about events and programs. So if the user, the user can use the app to communicate about or to, you know, tweet and send out Facebook posts about events that they're at and stuff like that.
Great. And so we have now a 3-1-1 mobile app. We have a Parks and Recreation mobile app. We have, are there any others or just the two right now? There's a library mobile app. Thank you, Director Danzik Lyons. Great, thank you. It's going to take up a whole page on my phone, all the Evanston apps. Thank you.
I just want to say one quick thing, and I know we got to move on. I just want to thank Ray and Karen and Melissa and the other members of our staff that have done such a good job of working on this app. I think it's going to be huge for us in terms of communicating with our demographic and the way in which they like to be communicated with, and it's a first step in the right direction. What I enjoy so much about my job is working with talented people who can make things happen, and I'm privileged to work with a department full of those types of people. So, and thank you all for your support. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next, I'm pleased that we're here to announce a series of awards. We've recently won. Erica Storley, the Deputy City Manager is here, and she'll talk about that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, members of the city council and City Manager Bobkowitz. I am Erica Storley, the Deputy City Manager, and I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about the PTI Solutions Awards that the City of Evanston has recently won. As you may recall, we have won several awards from the Public Technology Institute this year, including the Tech Savvy City, as well as the Citizen Engaged Community Designation. These three awards that we're going to present tonight are the third and final set of the PTI awards, and we are the only city in America to have won in all three categories. So that is a very exciting designation. Thank you. So the first award that I'm going to talk about tonight was the 2013-2014 Technology Solutions Award in Web Management and E-Government. And for this one, I'd like to bring up Jose Calderon and Luke Stowe. Both of these people were instrumental in helping us achieve this award for our web solutions and e-payments. So as you may know, we collect a lot of fees and services online, and Luke did a great job of implementing this technology with the help of folks in the Finance Department and across departments across the city to make sure that residents can pay for as many services online as we can possibly make for them to pay. So this year, we've collected $700,000 in payments, and over the next 12 months, we anticipate collecting over a million. So it's pretty great. The next award I'm going to talk about is the Significant Achievement Award in IT and Telecommunications. And for this award, Ricky Voss was helpful in us achieving this award, because this is for the stickerless wheel tax that we have implemented for the 2014 year. Since we've implemented this stickerless wheel tax, we have collected over $100,000 more revenue than we would have collected last year without it. So that is a really great achievement in this category, and we were recognized for it. The third award that we got was in the category for Public Safety Technology, and at this time, I'd like to bring up Chief Eddington to talk about that award.
Thank you, Erica. I'd like to ask Detective Bartsch to join me up at the podium. Good evening, Your Honor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Clerk and Alderman. Our armored car has done a lot of good in the city, and I need to give a lot of entities thanks for getting that program up and running. Suzette Robinson and Lonnie Jeski at Fleet Services turned a Brink's truck into an Evanston police vehicle. Getting that ready to go on the road, travel safely and get it painted up was a significant undertaking. I also want to thank Evanston Community Builders. They donated the solar panels that are on top the car now that allow us to loiter without servicing the vehicle up to seven days, depending on whether it's cloudy or not. And the last person I want to highlight his continued efforts in this project is Detective Brian Bartsch. We saw this idea at a Illinois Chiefs conference. He was able to take that idea and refine it. Our maintenance, our ability to loiter on scene is significantly greater than any other community, and Brian is the electronics wizard that put that all together. So I want him to take the primary credit for this endeavor. Thank you.
I just wanted to close by saying that the people that are here before you tonight are just some of the wonderfully talented people that we have the privilege of working with here at the City of Evanston, and these technology innovations are just part of a culture of creativity and innovation that we're trying to create across the city. And I think these awards are an example of the fact that creativity and innovation is happening in all departments, across all departments, with people working hand in hand with others. So thank you for that, and thank you for your support.
And Madam Mayor, if I can just add, this organization, PTI, has been around a long time. It was created by the National League of Cities and the International City County Managers Association over 25 years ago. Cities of all sizes, mostly the larger communities are the communities that are active in this organization. For the City of Evanston to receive all of their honors in the course of a year and being the only city in America to do that. New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Boston, all are competing with us. I think it's a tremendous accomplishment, and I think, as Erica said, it really speaks to the innovation and creativity of this entire workforce, because this isn't just one small group of people. This is people throughout our organization. And I really just wanted to take a moment to reflect that it really shows where this organization is and how we serve this community, and our sensitivity to make sure that we can provide the very best possible services. So thank you for indulging me for just a few extra moments. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. Today was the first day of early voting. I encourage everyone to come out and vote. We're in Room 2200. Out of the 44 early voting sites, we ranked number 18 with 211 folk who voted early this Also, if you have not registered, you still have grace period. You come here, you can register and vote at the same time. You do not need any identification. Just give your name and your address, and you can then go ahead and vote. That is what we have, that we're not turning away anybody. That's the new rules and regulations for voting this year. So if you just have your name, your address, and we find you in the books or on the computer, then you can vote and go from there. So I encourage everyone to come out and vote and vote early. You don't have to stand in lines on November 4th. That's all there for this evening. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Wasn't 200 far more than voted the last midterm?
Uh, yes.
All right. Next is public comment. We have two speakers, Mr. Rizki and Mr. Vasilko.
Not to take away from staff, but the reality of $1,000 seems a bit light. Let me get into my thing. The city is both ethically and fiscally bankrupt. The leadership here refuses to deal with the real financial issues and sits up here quietly and says nothing, although it's quite clear council members are in private communications among themselves. Fiscal bankruptcy, while the city may be able to balance its books through a continued shell game and telling the publics it's not raising taxes on the general fund but raising everything else and basically distorting that and misprove to the press, who then reports it to the public as you're not raising the taxes, is really quite interesting. As I've said before, the water utility is a total screwed up mess. We saw this clearly when, several meetings ago, with the Sheridan Road project, which you had to delay because you didn't plan it right. A real disaster, and it really is $4 million. The question is, how many more 10% water bills are coming? Not just to pay for the mistakes and the unnecessary projects, such as possibly moving a water tank, and by the way, the report hasn't shown up, yet it's still in the budget tonight. We haven't seen it yet, and that's $30 million, basically, I think, roughly in that range. It's really, has this been discussed in private, or how is this going to be passed in the budget tonight? You know, we're building patios for businesses, we're paving parking spaces for council members out here. To me, this is not really doing, running a capital program. This is misusing our capital budget. You know, I've been called a criminal up here. I've been called, my mental state's been questioned by public officials. But as you sit up here quietly and say nothing and do nothing about the real issues of the budget, and you talk about window dressing with these awards and things, there are millions of dollars at stake here that's being misused. And I don't believe any council member knows what's going on with that Water Department budget or what it's even doing. It's a so-called enterprise fund? That is a joke, because you are raising tax rates on residents for years to come, when it's supposed to be a profitable business. I just think, I think people in the community will eventually understand this, and we'll get through to them. And I'll close on this. Some of you who sit up here and say nothing should remember throughout history that those that had the authority and responsibility to do what they were supposed to do and didn't do it will be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston. I guess every year, we start the budget discussions with, you know, I read about how much additional taxes and fees are going to be raised and how those fees are going to affect property owners here in Evanston, which includes me. I've lived in Evanston for over 24 years. I'm still waiting for that year when the council announces a property tax decrease or a decrease in fees or other city taxes. Maybe the presentation's going to answer a lot of my questions, but I am opposed to what's been reported as an 11% increase in library spending, a 20% increase in city general assistance, and a 4% increase in the pension fund. These increases appear to be mostly tied to staff increases, and I don't understand why we need 3.3 new full-time library staff or three new township staff or two additional general assistance staff, not to mention the 2.5 new workforce development staff. It seems like the city managed just fine in 2014. What changed? I guess I'd like to know what changed to cause the need for adding over 10 additional full-time employees. I'll speak for myself, but I'm sure others believe property taxes in Evanston are high enough. The water rates seem to be high enough. One thing I could offer as a partial solution to keeping, to avoid raising taxes, is to stop handing out millions of dollars to wealthy for-profit corporations who want to do work here in Evanston and claim to be broke. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tonight will be the last night that I will take non-agenda topic, public comments.
Of course you can speak, Betty. Go right ahead. I'm sorry. I don't have my notes, so I can't point out the pages and everything, the information, but I will have them, I will circulate via email to all the council and the city manager, because these are some questions that need to be answered. In reading the summary that the city manager put together, he talks about what the budget was, how much it was going to increase, and where the shortfall was and stuff. And you start adding these numbers, and there seem to be not enough numbers on the incoming, which would be revenue, to make up for, as he called it, the influx of expense from the other funds. I don't understand that, unless that means transferring money from one fund to the general fund. And then there was a statement that said that there was 1,200 some from the, in the budget, the 2014 budget, that had to do with the general assistance program. And I looked at the general assistance program and their budget, that was an incorrect figure. I went back to the website to make sure that I saw what that figure was. It was incorrect. I didn't memorize it, but I will give you that later. That was the incorrect figure. As far as I can remember, when you, in 2013, December, when the city budget was approved, there was no funds in the city budget that had any dealings with the general assistance program that you took over this year. Because there was, it was, remember, the budget was approved before the vote. So therefore, there could not have been a dollar amount in there. So that seems to be incorrect. And the gentleman was talking about the employees, how many employees you have and everything. Before this budget go forth, I would ask that you go back and check all your figures and stuff, because where you talk about the, add up the numbers of, I guess it was new employees, and they was juggling, and you had a total of 49 for one, 48. And add it up, it was one over 49. And whether that's counting a lower employee or a higher employee, it makes a difference because the pension amount that you have to add into there, if you're not capturing that employees, will put your budget out of whack. So I will give you all of this information, but I would suggest that you go back over the proposed budget that was submitted to the community via the internet and make whatever corrections need to be made and tell us where these corrections was made. So then, when we come back again to the next meeting, we can have a better understanding and communication of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take non-agenda topics only now for this one last time, because our city council regular meeting agenda is incorrect and it does not include non-agenda public comments at the end. So Mr. Rizki, if you'd like to speak now, and then we'll get that cleared up for the next meeting.
Fair enough. Thank you for that. I'll figure out a way to have other people give me their time at the next meeting, so you'll hear from me more. But I think the thing I keep on asking this council and been asking for a long time is for you to really do an analysis of the Water Department. Mr. Bobkowitz has claimed it's an enterprise fund making money, and that the statistics and things that we've seen up here, basically, that have been shown to us have been how other communities were going to benefit from the sale of water. And as we see it now, Des Plaines is selling, the Northwest Water Commission's selling water, you're selling our water to Des Plaines as a middleman, and we're making no money. But the city did claim it was getting half a million net from the deal every year. I'd like to know where that half a million net is going to go. Why are we raising water rates if we're going to get half a million net? That's an interesting question that needs to be answered, but there's so many questions that need to be answered. Somebody needs to look at this as a real business, not as a collusion of funds which is going on now, because the capital's all put together in here, and it doesn't make any sense. So I don't, you know, frankly, from my position, I can afford these water rate increases. I don't use a lot of water, but there are many people in town that can't. As most of you know, there are many people that can't pay these bills. So, and they're going to go up, and I, you know, I'm not against them going up for honest projects that make sense. But when at the meeting, the last meeting, I hear you're going to move utilities for Northwestern University on the Sheridan Road project. You said that, and I want to know why, and you can, someone can answer that too, you know, or move a water tank possibly, potentially. These kind of things cannot be done. We cannot do this. You have a responsibility to use our money to do things to benefit the public, and that's the responsibility you have here. And you also need to get this business under control. I think there is no business at the water plant, and that is the problem. It is not a business. And I mean, to pretend it's a business. And the other issue, Wally's hiring all these people. Do you have any enough people to really run these businesses, your water plant, or do you have anybody to even do these capital projects? I don't have time to look at all this. It appears the employee that you hired as the new engineer is gone. I don't know if he's here or not anymore. He might be, he might not, I haven't seen him at any meetings. But do we have enough people that can even do the real work of the city, not create little apps and things for $1,000? I mean, we need people to run the multimillion dollar projects. And if they're not being run right, which they appear not to be, there's some serious problems here. Some of you need to start to think about how this city's run. I mean, the frills and the awards and things are fine, but we have a huge budget here that needs to be run, and it doesn't appear to be running. That's all I'll say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Special Order of Business Fiscal Year 2015 Budget Presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm very pleased this evening to be here with our very talented and capable staff to present to you our proposed budget for fiscal year 2015. This will be the sixth budget that I have presented to the city council as your city manager, and I'm very pleased to report this is the very best budget that we have. You have struggled for the past many years to balance the needs of this community along with its available resources, and it's been very difficult. And I'm happy to report that I believe there is a path this year to prepare a budget that is proactive, that is addressing the needs of Evanston residents in a very proactive way, while at the same time, making sure that it's fiscally responsible. As a community, we, I think, sometimes struggle with what we will be and what we will continue to be as a community that attracts people, businesses, to be in Evanston. And I think it's very clear that why people are here, why people want to come here, is the livability of Evanston. And perhaps that's an overused term in some places, but I think it's a very appropriate term here in Evanston. We aren't going to have a regional shopping mall. We're not going to have many more car dealers. We're not going to have industry, but what we do have is livability. This is an excellent, excellent place to live. I think we've gotten to the point of joking that almost weekly, there is some organization or another in America that ranks the City of Evanston as a place that people want to be in, either because of today, political leanings, or walkability, or bikeability, or recreation. Over and over, we are seeing organizations throughout America pointing to Evanston as a place you want to live. So that's really our market. That's really the industry that I think we need to support, is to make sure this is not only the most livable city in Illinois, certainly we want to be among the most livable cities in America, but there's no question that we can't be one of the most livable cities in the world, that we have the resources, have the amenities, that we can do that, and we can do that in a way that is responsible from a fiscal perspective. But as we're looking at that, I think it's also important that we're livable for all Evanston residents, that this isn't a one ward, two ward, North Evanston, South Evanston issue. This is an all Evanston issue. And the changes that you're seeing in this proposed budget really are to address, to make sure that all Evanston residents can live here and be comfortable here. With the change in the status of the Evanston Township, we are back in the human services business. And one of the proposals with this budget is to fully recognize that and to adopt, once again, the name of a Department of Health and Human Services. Ivana Thomas and her very capable staff are already doing that, and the work that they're doing with the former general assistance activity from Evanston Township is the key to that. And we'll talk this evening, we'll talk on Saturday, we'll talk through the budget process about the budget changes that we have made to reflect the incorporation of the former township services. We are proposing in this budget that there is no property tax increase for those funds under the city council's direct responsibility, and as- under the city council's direct responsibility, and as you'll see tonight in the presentation as to how we've done that, is that we've absorbed the costs associated with the town fund. And while there are increases to the general assistance fund, it is because there is need. And what we have learned with the operation of general assistance under the city of Evanston, that there's many more people in this community now who are reaching out to us for assistance. And so you will see increases in that, but that all balances out in those general fund, or those fund areas that the city council is responsible for. We're also proposing to add two additional positions that will be funded out of the general fund to work in the Health and Human Services Department, to continue to meet this growing need that we have of residents in Evanston that are in need, that perhaps are not eligible for township general assistance services. And those two positions, one would be an additional general assistance specialist, so while they'll be funded by the general fund, they will continue to do outreach, and they will continue to work and connect people to resources that they have. And then we're also proposing to add a position that will help us recover costs. We've, have become very good at this, and I believe Ms. Thomas-Smith will, will talk further about this as we go through the budget, but we believe we need to have a position, perhaps a contract position rather than a full-time staff person position, to collect monies from other departments of the federal government, insurance, other ways, to get back some of those costs. So this budget is very focused on making sure that we are a livable community, but that we're a livable community in all wards and all sections of Evanston. Another area that we're increasing our commitment is in the area of youth and young adult. We've made excellent, excellent progress in that area over the last few years, and as you'll hear tonight from Director McCray, we still have work to do. And so we're proposing to make some staffing adjustments there in order to do that. The CIP, which we're going to save until Saturday, so we'll go through the operating budget and the enterprise funds, and we'll do the CIP on Saturday, also has increased investments. As we reached out to the community this year, we heard very loud and clear one thing, and that was that we needed to spend more money on streets. And so we have put more money in the capital budget on streets. Another part of our CIP, which we'll talk about on Saturday, but we'll also cover on the operations side this evening, is our water utility. We have worked for many years to make sure, first and foremost, that our water utility serves our residents in the best way possible. And that is a very difficult thing to do when you have infrastructure in excess of 100 years old. Many communities around us, in the North Shore especially, have shied away from making those investments. The city of Chicago has shied away from making those investments, but the city council has not shied away. And despite any efforts of members of the community to convince you otherwise, your staff is going to continue to ask you to invest in our water infrastructure, and to invest in our sewer infrastructure. Communities around us have not done that, and we see regularly, anytime there's any sort of rain, what happens with that. We see when we are not investing in water infrastructure, what happens in other communities. We are very fortunate to be located on Lake Michigan, we're very fortunate to treat water. We sell water to other communities, perhaps some of those contracts are not what they should be, but we're making extra efforts to make sure that we can make that water utility one that continues to generate additional revenue to benefit the residents of Evanston. So the 10% operating fee increase that we're asking for is to help us to continue to invest in critical water infrastructure. We will continue to seek out other communities to be customers of ours, and hope that that will come to pass, and as it comes to pass, take the monies that are raised, certainly in part, if not in whole, to put back into the infrastructure to benefit Evanston residents who have paid for over 100 years for that water infrastructure. So, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I'm very proud of what you're about to hear this evening with this budget. I think it is very responsible. We are doing what you've asked us to do, we are investing in places that we need to invest, we are being responsible with debt, we are being responsible with our pension payments, we're doing all the things that a good community, that a livable community should do, but will never be done, and we'll have to continue to be vigilant. And I appreciate the hard decisions that the city council has made the last few years, and I know unfortunately that there are still hard decisions to make as we move forward. But I think this budget continues to provide a great groundwork, so that people want to live here, want to work here, want to shop here, want to recreate here, want to go to school here, want to visit our lakefront, because that's our business. That is what is going to drive the economy of Evanston for many years to come, is the people wanting to be here, wanting to live here, wanting to have a life here and be part of our community. And in order to do that, the city government needs to continue to invest in those parts of that, so that everyone, all nine wards, feel comfortable living here in the city of Evanston. And I'm very proud with this budget and believe that with your consideration, we will be able to do that in 2015 and moving forward. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, with that preamble, I'd like to introduce Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. He and his dedicated team will walk you through this. And again, we'll stop with, after point six on the presentation, we'll pick up the capital budget on Saturday morning. Saturday will also be the formal public hearing for the budget. We're certainly happy to answer any questions or take questions for you for budget memos. We'll hope to have the first group of those budget memos, Mr. Lyons, for the meeting on Saturday, so they probably would be out toward the end of this week. But with that, Mr. Lyons, good evening.
Good evening, Manager Bobkowitz. Thank you for that introduction. Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green. City manager's already introduced me, so I don't think I need to do that. But I would like to introduce Ashley Porter, our budget manager, and Alex Thorpe, our management analyst. They have been both putting together a budget, but also doing it with a new system. So we've had some interesting times over the last three months, but the software that you graciously allowed us to invest in has been paying off. We are learning an awful lot about better ways to account for all of our expenditures within the budget in a much different way than we did in the past five years that I've been doing this. So, to get right into the budget, we usually will give you a 2014 status. So, as noted on the slide, we are running with our revenues approximately 2% above budget. That's a good news. If you recall, we increased the revenue budget last year, not through increases in rates, but through higher projections of many basic revenues, such as our real estate transfer tax, sales tax, income tax. The economy is stable, and because of Evanston's diversity economically, we are also being stable. We're not dependent on car sales, we're not dependent on big-box sales, but we have a nice, stable increase that we've been able to track, and we think will continue for the next year. So, I don't need to read each of these. Probably the biggest one is that the permits that we projected, we had a very large increase in permits, and we're going to beat that number. And as we go through the 2015 budget, we anticipate that number to stay at a high level through 2015, not just through Northwestern building, but through some other buildings of size as well throughout the community. The, right now, the expenses, though, on the negative side, thanks to last year's winter, and also our very aggressive stance in trying to be in the community from a law enforcement and public safety perspective, we're looking at being $1.3 million over our expenditure budget for the coming, for this year. So what we will do that we haven't had to do before is propose a budget amendment at the same time that we adopt 2015. So we will amend the 2014 budget at the same time we adopt 2015. As noted at the bottom of the slide, even with that amendment, we are projecting an $800,000 surplus. So our growth in revenues is going to be greater than our growth in expenditures due to the bad winter and our increased activities in public safety and public works. So our total budget, $260 million. As is the case each year, that does include transfers. When you take transfers out, that's about $35 million back out of that. For the public, transfers are the monies that we pay ourselves, for instance, maintaining our fleet, or our own health insurance fund, or any of a number of internal service funds. Our general fund revenues, I'm going to take a step back and note that on these slides, you're going to see a brief review of the budget balancing worksheet. And each year, we use the budget balancing worksheet to tell the story of how we get to a balance. In this case, we have a reverse situation of previous years, where revenues are higher than expenditures. So we're starting off with our projection for revenues, with the only new revenue being a $70,000 proposed auto rental tax increase, but our revenue's at $92 million, and our general fund expenditures at $88.3 million. So that's a surplus of $3.8 million. But that is before we get into a lot of activities that we need to do to see our total budget balanced. So, looking at that $3.8 million surplus, we have three major transfers that we need to make. One of them is $1.4 million, and I'm going to go to the next slide, because it tells it much nicer. One of them is, right in the middle of the slide, a $1.4 million transfer from the general fund to the debt service fund, so that we do not need to increase the debt service tax levy. And this is coming from those baseline revenues, not a new tax increase, that is from baseline revenues. Then the next two lines are a transfer of tax levy, meaning, as the city manager pointed out, we're going to actually reduce the general fund tax levy by $310,928 for police pension, and by $462,000 for the general assistance fund. So, general fund levy goes down by those amount, those other two funds go up by that amount, a net zero in the general fund. I want to go back to the top of this slide, though, just briefly, and point out, I've talked about the revenue growth. $2.9 million is our growth over last year in revenues, budget to budget, and we went up the previous year as well. So we have a strong economy. But we asked departments, because we knew that we have changes in our operations that are needed, all non-public safety departments were asked to cut 3% out of their total budgets, not just their non-personnel budgets, their total budget. So that comes up to $1.4 million, and we came up with about, you know, we were within $100,000 of that in actual cuts. When you go through the budget balancing worksheet, we come up to that number. So the departments did an excellent job in coming up with ways to keep their services where they're at, with a couple of exceptions, we have a couple of changes, but with that cut, which helps us to keep our debt service levy flat, to invest in pensions, and to change what we're doing by adding to the general assistance fund. Finally, on this page, I just want to point out, and we'll, we'll be going through all of these, but we then asked the departments, what would you like to do differently? And they came up with approximately $1.5 million in different service requests, such as $100,000 for the crime lab, that will help the police department out tremendously. Instead of waiting months for state of Illinois, we will be able to use a local source and have our activities turned around much more quickly. All of that brings us down to a balanced budget by $125,000. And this is just a repeat of that. I think what's important to note is the third bullet point, that through all of this, if you recall, almost a year ago, we had labor peace. We got all of our contracts settled, and so we do have to pay out on those labor contracts. So the budget that is proposed has the wage increase in it, and has next year's wage increase in it, which is really important to show the lack of the word you always hear, structural deficit. There's a lack of a structural deficit in this general fund. The, I mentioned the $1.4 million as a decrease. The utilization of 2015 operating savings and revenue growth, again, it's for specific programs like workforce development, that we'll talk about later, one-time capital purchases, our laptops inside all of the squads are six, seven years old. That's a $250,000 expenditure. We're looking at replacing a lot of our server infrastructure, because we're going with cameras and need a lot more space. That's a $250,000 expenditure. So we're looking at new technology to help support our new services, and then finally, we're using those savings to keep our debt service flat. Just some details, it is only the revenue slide, 3% is the new number, Skokie is 8%, 12%, and Chicago is 8%. So we're not talking about going up anywhere near Two Neighbors for the auto rental tax. So where did the, this million four in expenses start with? And I get on a roll, and I forget that my assistants are going to do some of the presentation tonight, so Ashley Porter, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, City Manager Bobkowitz, Clerk Green. As Marty mentioned, at the beginning of the budget process and in the July 7th Rules Committee, City Manager Bobkowitz asked all non-public safety departments to submit 3% in cuts over the 2014 budget. And what came back was $1,000, $1,400,000 in cuts, and some of these are highlighting the largest of those numbers. The first one, reduction in contractual services, a lot of this is due to RFPs and bids coming in lower than was budgeted, which is great. The second one is the elimination of vital records, saving almost $170,000. It's important to note that this is cutting two FTEs from the budget, but our plan is to relocate those individual people to other vacancies within the city. So we're not looking at layoffs, we're looking at kind of restructuring that and eliminating that service. The third one, it's an off-year for Dutch elm disease inoculation, so that's a savings. The elimination of the architect position vacancy saves $87,000. Again, that's already a vacancy currently. We are reducing our budget for natural gas use based on current year estimates and trends, and we're able to reduce our consulting services budget, and that's mainly in community development. For a full list by department, it's on page 19 of the proposed budget. So as Marty mentioned, one of the things that you may have noticed in the proposed budget is that some of the documents look kind of different. They're coming out of our brand-new financial system, which is New World Systems. It's our HR and finance system, and it, we used it from start to finish for the creation of the proposed budget. So departments were able to enter their information, we were able to run reports, and we were able to actually use it to build the document. One of the most useful parts of it is how exact it was on position budgeting. Instead of these giant Excel spreadsheets that we used to have, we are now able to actually track down to the individual level, level on things like insurance funding and other specific education incentives to kind of budget more precisely. And we are very excited to be able to use that to increase transparency and reporting throughout the year. So that's really exciting for us. So I just kind of wanted to go through the position control part of the budget, because it is slightly confusing. So the, the top number that we're starting with is 805.67 FTEs, and that was the number that was approved last year in the 2014 budget. Now, that number increased by six FTEs during this year. One was the tax assessment reviewer, and two were the general assistance specialists, one was a customer service representative. All four of these were from the absorption of the township. The other two increases were the senior ombudsman assistant and the youth and young adult outreach development worker. These were intended to kind of put more of a focus on the council's goals to help at-risk families. So of the six positions that were added during 2014, four of them were from the absorption of the township. The second position were proposed in the budget documents. So the first two, the transfer of vital records staff, which we already mentioned, and the elimination of the architect position, those are in the back of the document, in the position control portion, because those are included as those departments' 3% proposed cuts. Next, 3.3, 3.3 increase in part-time positions at the library. That is also included in the back of the document, because those were already approved by the library board. So then we come to the bottom part. These are additions that are proposed in the budget balancing worksheet, or that are up for consideration by the city council. These are 4.5 positions. A general assistance specialist, medical billing clerk, these would both be in Health and Human Services, and they would go towards, as City Manager Bobkowitz mentioned, general assistance functions. Next, we have an MWEB and LEP coordinator. As you may be aware, we currently have a contractual employee serving this role. We'd like to replace that with a full-time employee. And then 1.5 increase in parks outreach workers. So that leaves us with a number, if everything is approved as presented, of 816.47 FTEs. And the department directors will be able to answer individual questions about these So again, as I just said, if the council approves everything listed in the budget balancing worksheet and detailed in the city manager's letter, it will increase 10.8 FTEs over 2014 level. over 2014 levels. But when you break that down, the increases are three positions from the township, two new positions related to general assistance functions, 3.3 positions approved by the library board, and two and a half are related to workforce development and at-risk families. As always, in the back of the budget document, there's detailed information on the individual positions, their titles, their FTE counts, what division they're in, everything like that, starting on page 195. And with that, I'm going to move the presentation to Alex Thorpe, Management Analyst with Administrative
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, City Manager Bob Kowitz, Clerk We're going to jump into the slide on the property tax levy history. As Marty mentioned earlier in the presentation, it was a very close to net zero change on the property tax for the total operating levy. So, this slide sort of details that out, as you can see, from a 2012 adopted all the way to 2014 proposed. I'd like to draw your attention to the general fund and the IMRF pension. From 2013 to 2014, we're seeing a 5.4% decrease in those funds. As you can, below that gray line, you can now see the township general assistance and the township town fund being absorbed in 2014 with the creation of the GA fund at, being proposed at 1.3 million. The fire pension and the debt service funds also have a zero net, zero net change from 2013 to 2014, and the police pension has a 3.9% increase from 13 to 14. Below that line, you can see the library fund increasing 15.5, which they'll speak to later in the presentation, and the library debt service fund is decreasing 19.1. What this all means, if you look at the bottom line, the total net levy actually is a slight increase of 1.2%. So, what does this all mean? This chart is a summary, impact summary for residents of Evanston. We have three categories of property values, one set at $300,000, one at $600,000, one at $900,000. And if you work your way from the top to the bottom, you can see the impact on the tax levies as proposed. So, if you look at the $300,000 property, you get an estimated assessed value at $79,800. You can see the line below that, the city debt service, police, and fire pension rates are 1.76%. The library rate is set at .234%, the GA fund is set at .053%, which would bring for a total city slash library rate at 2.047%. What that means is on a property at $300,000, you'll see their property tax bill, which they'll get every year, will show $1,634, which will be payable in 2014. The slide before had the changes with the creation of the GA fund. The bottom on the slide shows what the impact is for next year payable in 2015. As you can see, that same property at $300,000 went from $1,634 to $1,653, only a $20 difference. And if you went all the way to the right, to the $900,000 property, it's less than During this budget process, the budget team really reached out to residents to gather their feedback of where they would like to see the money spent within the budget. So, one of the things that we went out and hit the streets hard with was the Evanston Streets Alive. Ashley and I had the iPads and were soliciting feedback from everybody that walked by, asking them to complete our survey that essentially asked them, if we gave you $100, where would you like to see that money spent within the city? In the bottom right chart, you can see that 32% of the residents that filled it out said, let's put some more in streets with parks and recreation and arts coming in number two. So, overwhelmingly, those two areas saw the most resident feedback where they would put the money. The same survey also went on the EngageEvanston.org website. We also had, you can send it in by mail and email, you can call and text us, and we also put it on our Facebook and Twitter page. One of the things we've also completed for this budget process was actually a budget in brief video that highlighted the overall budget, the $260 million proposed budget, just some key highlight points that we thought, based on resident feedback, they'd like to see. And I would like to mention, this is the abridged version. Mr. Lyons had six minutes, but we cut it down to two for everybody's sanity, so we'll watch it right now.
Welcome. And thank you for your interest in the Evanston budget. The 2015 proposed budget is $260 million. During this budget process, we asked you, the residents, where you would like to see the city prioritize its spending, and overwhelmingly, you said, please fix our roads. This is a breakdown of the resident survey showing where other areas we would also like to see the money being spent. Taking a look at our streets budget, you spoke and we listened. We'll be spending an additional $300,000 or a 10% increase on streets, bringing the total money spent on streets to $19 million when you include water main projects. Here are some of the streets that we'll be working on in 2015. Switching gears, this budget also emphasizes public safety. The city continues to focus on maintaining excellent public safety without reducing its services. Some other interesting things in this budget included are matching grant funding for exploring solar power for city facilities, absorbing the township. The city's tax levy will incorporate this amount, decreasing costs to residents. There'll be additional funding for snow and ice removal, as well as additional funding for pensions without increasing the city's tax levy. Also, the 2015 proposed budget includes no net increase in property taxes for the combined levies in the general fund, debt service fund, pension funds, and the newly created general assistance fund. This budget also includes more resources for at-risk families and youth and young adults. There'll be additional staff for youth engagement and workforce development, an improvement of case management. There'll be also an expansion of workforce partnerships and outreach, all in hopes to align the city resources and its external partners. What does this all mean? Well, the general fund is balanced without the need to increase property taxes or increase revenues. For more information, please contact Ashley Porter, Budget Manager, at our contact information listed below.
Thank you, Alex, and it was just totally demoralizing for me to go through, and I thought I was flying through that video, and it was just like being the slowest racer. I hit six minutes, and they were, all my staff was just looking at me and saying, yep, because Ashley came in and did it in four minutes, and I said, well, I think I can do that. And Alex came in. I don't know if this is a generational thing or not, but he came in and did it in two minutes and 20 seconds, so thank you very much. Just to wrap up before I introduce Joe McCray, as we go through the department budgets, just a look at all of our funds graphically. You can see the general fund is still the largest, but, fund, but police and fire pension, the mayor works tirelessly on pension reform. When you're spending 7% of every dollar on those two pension funds, that's a big hit that we have. So, I will also note, though, down at the bottom, we continue to expand the capital improvements fund and our water fund. Those are both bigger this year from capital investments. So, with that, Mr. McCray, I believe you have the floor.
Good evening again, Joe McCray, Director of Parks and Community Services and Deputy City Manager. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Just going to highlight a couple of things that's going on in our department regards to budget, and then talk a little bit about the youth and young adult program. As you all, or as the council is aware, we have been reorging throughout the course of this year in the two divisions, Recreation and Parks, and then Community Services. Bob Dornaker worries about Recreation and Parks, and Christina Ferraro worries about the Community Services piece. We did this in order to provide a more community-wide focus, less so much focused on buildings, more so much focused on programs, and providing those programs more effectively and efficiently and citywide. And I think that it's worked out pretty well. It's allowed us to do some different things and to work more collaboratively, both as a department and with our partners in the community. So, you can see for yourself, I won't read those things to you in the interest of time, but there's a lot that our department does, and I'm proud of the work that's been accomplished over the last year. Some of the things that I wanted to highlight are the mobile app, because I know there was a comment about the mobile app, but I think the app is an opportunity for us to reach our residents and reach them in a way that will allow more individuals in this community to participate in parks and programs and to find out more about what it is that we provide. I think there could be connection to revenues with that app, if it's effective, and that's our hope and our intention to go forward with that opportunity. The Zombie Scramble and different events, the Holiday Fund with Olaf, pop-up theater over the summer, and Lakefront Fitness just marks a couple of the events that are new and exciting in our department that the residents have very well responded to. That Zombie Scramble, which is going to take place on November 1st, is sold out. We need more zombies. We have so many residents, we need more zombies, so. And I'm actually not joking about that, believe it or not. It's well received, again, a testament to the creativity of the department and just trying to respond to the needs of the community. On a more serious note, though, one of our operations in the department, as you all know and have been so gracious to support over the years, has been our youth and young adult division. This division focuses on the at-risk, we like to call them opportunity youth ages 16 to 24 in the city of Evanston. It's been an area of concern, and so this group, if you look to your left, the staffing that we've had has worked diligently to address those issues, and I think I've done a good job. We've talked some about the workforce development programs they provided. We've talked about the increase in the mayor's summer youth employment program from 162 jobs three years ago to 500 jobs this year and growing. We've talked about partnerships, whether it be with Oakden, YOU, the Youth Job Center, all these efforts in an attempt to be proactive about violence prevention, intervention, and linking this delegate demographic to the resources in this community. And that is a, that's an, that's an active responsibility. And so, we are reaching over 400 individuals right now, but there's more that we can do. I would say that there's more that we can do, particularly in the area of outreach to our young females in town. We have done a, I think we've done an effective job in reaching out to the young males. There's more males for us to reach out to, but definitely we can do more for the young ladies in town in terms of providing them with the same services. And so, you're seeing the budget that, on the right-hand side of the screen, that we're asking for an increase in staff, two full-time outreach workers and an additional seasonal outreach worker which works in the summer. That is to allow us to reach out to more of this delicate demographic. There's more work to be done. We realize that the city can't do it all. We will continue to work collaboratively with our partners in town, but this would allow us to reach more. This is a hard demographic to reach, a hard demographic to reach and probably a, but I believe a worthy demographic to reach. I think that we've seen the return on investment with the young people that we've touched and connecting them with resources, and I think that for those individuals, they are shining examples of the fact that if we can just reach them and get them to the resources, many of them would take those opportunities and move forward in a proactive way, different than what their trajectory would have been otherwise. And so, that's our humble ask for this budget. And with that, that completes my presentation. And I will pass it over to Police Chief at this point in time. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, members of the diocese again. Back to talk briefly about the upcoming police budget. And these comments have a context. The context that I want to put them in is a 5.5% reduction year-to-date in Part 1 crimes that translates into 91 less victims citywide. There's a lot of effort that goes into that, and one of the ones that I want to highlight is our start into social media endeavors is Text a Tip. This program was initiated by Huron several years ago. It's come to maturity. We are using it all the time, every day, and one of, one of the issues that we have that other communities don't is, when you're texting a tip, you're dealing with a 911 operator. It's handled in real time, it's not put in a queue, and it is attended to immediately. And so, you can see those numbers begin to trend up. Last year, total texted tips were 147. This year, to date, at the end of September, we're already at 158, and this program will continue to go. Also, we are going to increase our social media footprint, and this is a significant change of philosophy for the police department. We realize in today's society, it's critically important that we pump out information. And this is a flip from, hey, it's on the website, go find it. We need to know the important information and get it out on a timely manner. Consequently, we have authorized multiple shift supervisors to send out that information whenever they're working and whatever event that comes up. And we have found this to be very useful already, and you will, you will see a continued presence in, in that arena. We also are going to be spending a considerable amount of time on Shared the Road programs in 2015. This is a topic that has sprung up nationwide. Our research has taken us as far east as Richmond, Virginia, and as far west as Portland, Oregon. As we attempt to increase the use of bicycles and other means of transportation, these issues become more and more complex. One of the questions that I received from an alderman within the last 10 days was an issue regarding skateboarders. That question frankly even stumped the traffic sergeant. It took a considerable amount of research to find out that they are considered pedestrians, so they don't have to stop at stop signs. So, it, as we work towards sharing the road, these things become increasingly complex. If you look at the effort put forth by Suzette Robinson's crew in the Public Works Department on the Chicago Avenue streetscape, that different bike lanes was critical to biking safety and sharing the road. And as we work through the three E's of traffic safety, engineering, education, and enforcement, we will need to, we will need to spend a considerable amount of time on the education of the public as to what our expectations are. Further, I will be looking to the members of the diocese as we work through these issues in 2015 to set the tone for what is expected in the city of Evanston regarding pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles. And that tone is significant to the city. I'm certain we do not want the LAPD model where we're writing tickets to jaywalkers, not what we've got in mind in Evanston. But somewhere, we will have to find that balance with the education and enforcement. I think one of the upcoming educational parts of this is the Pedal Bright activity that will occur on October 30th. You will see more and more outreach by the police department to engage in those educational endeavors, to communicate to the writing public what we expect their conduct to be. I appreciate this opportunity to discuss our new efforts in the upcoming budget year, and I look forward to your input as we hone those efforts and tailor them to what the city of Evanston wants.
Can you advance that, Cindy? Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Clerk Green, and members of the city council, City Manager Bob Kowitz, Craig Kleiber, Fire Chief. Just want to highlight a couple of things out of our budget. I know you have our, my, our department's budget document within the budget itself, but I wanted to preface it by saying, we, over the last couple of years, have, have reached out and tried to do what we can in terms of community outreach and to make our department a part of this city's livability. And what we've done in those areas, three initiatives come to mind. One is Community CPR Program, another is our Fire Explorer Program, and a third is our recently started Citizens Fire our Fire Explorer Program, and a third is our recently started Citizens' Fire Academy. All of these have been very successful programs over the last three years, and I can't think of anything that, uh, would highlight, uh, wanting to, uh, make our city, city more livable than to teach people how to save lives, and that's what we've done over the last, uh, several years. So, um, along those lines, what we've decided and what we've talked about doing over the next year in 2015, is a program geared towards livable city, uh, making Evanston the most livable city, and, uh, and a, a further outreach at community, uh, further outreach of community engagement, and that is your neighborhood fire station. So, we essentially want to open up our fire stations and have them be more part of the community of Evanston, and, uh, align them more with some of our community recreation centers that are in the neighborhoods themselves. One of the efforts that we're, we're going to engage in this year and working with, um, all the initiatives that I brought up a few minutes ago, where in-house and what we've done, um, and developed and programs uh, that we did with our own staffing. But what we'd like to do now is work with other departments within, within the city, uh, such as this, uh, um, Firehouse-Based Healthcare Initiative. And what we would like to do is work with the Health Department and Director Thomas and the staffing of the Health Department, and open, open up our fire stations to provide a Fire, Firehouse-Based Health Screening and Education, topical information provided to our residents, uh, screenings such as blood pressure checks, uh, glucose, uh, checks for diabetes, uh, or even thinking of offering, uh, flu shots, uh, vaccinations, and education and use, and doing this with, uh, partners, not only within the city of Evanston, but also healthcare providers with, um, uh, outside of city staffing, such as the two major hospitals in Evanston and, and others, uh, private organizations. So, I think this has a lot of potential. Uh, we envision this, um, scheduling this probably once a month that wrote, on a rotating basis within our fire stations. We'd staff this with, uh, our firefighter paramedics who would be off-duty as well as, uh, some health, uh, department staffing. So, I think this has a lot of potential and, uh, will go, I, I think, a long way to providing our residents information on, uh, on how they can improve their health or feedback on their current health as well. A second one we're going to look at next year is, um, this is, is a little more fun, I think, would be Movie Time at the Fire Stations. We have five fire stations throughout the city of Evanston, as everybody knows. But we would like to open up our fire stations again, as I said, and, uh, connect with, uh, Bob Dornaker and the Recreation Department and the, and the rec staff, uh, to provide evenings in, in our fire stations, uh, where we would allow the public and, and the youth and families to come into our fire stations and enjoy an evening, uh, watching, uh, movies, uh, on the apparatus floor. And, and not only would we, uh, allow them, you know, to see our fire stations as they can anytime they would like, but, uh, we would open up the fire stations, uh, in another outreach, uh, bringing our community and, you know, having them become, uh, more involved in what we do and how we do it. So, uh, we, we feel that this has a lot of, uh, potential, as well as the healthcare initiative, and we look forward to doing that in 2015. So, um, thank you for your time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, Alderman, City Manager Bob Quitz, Dave Stoneback, Utilities Director. Uh, tonight I have three slides. The first one's talking about wholesale water sales, which is probably the most interesting, but probably the slowest-paced uh, event that occurs. Uh, the Northwest Water Commission has given all indications that they will, uh, accept Displanes as a customer through their organization and provide them 5 million gallons of water a day. That won't take place, uh, at least until mid-2015. A pipeline does have to be constructed and for that to take place, and then they would be set to go. And we do estimate that, uh, Evanston will realize about $500,000 in additional revenue, uh, year, if they take it for a full year. That's how much money we estimate that they would, uh, that we would realize in, uh, beyond our costs for extra electricity, natural gas, and chemicals. Uh, Lincolnwood, it has contacted the city of Evanston, uh, again, with some renewed interest. They have hired, uh, Christopher Burke as their city engineer, and they've assigned Christopher Burke to review our proposal to sell them water. Uh, a letter went to Christopher Burke a little bit over 30 days ago. We contacted Christopher Burke to see if they had any questions, and they said, "Not yet," and they would let us know if they have any. Niles, Morton Grove, and Park Ridge have banded together and hired a consultant to consider options to purchase water as well. Uh, we provided information to that consultant, again, a little bit over a month ago. Uh, we have been in touch with them, uh, but we have not heard anything back from that organization either. Uh, NIMZI Jawa, or the Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Authority, uh, actually, this is probably the, the biggest thing happening right now too, is that they have met with the Northwest Water Commission and Evanston. We had a meeting, uh, again, about a month ago. We have a meeting scheduled for later this month as well, and that is to see if there's a way that we can partner the three organizations together to, uh, provide water out to those seven communities in association with the Northwest Water Commission. So, uh, that is the, the big carrot. If we can get those seven communities to purchase water from Evanston, that would, uh, allow Evanston to receive the most return on, uh, investment for providing them water. This year in 2015, we are asking for a 10% water rate increase. As, when we, uh, talked to you last November about a 10% rate increase in, for 2014, we indicated that we'd be asking for a 10% rate increase this year, and again, proposed in 2016 as well. Again, that will be dependent on whether we get other wholesale water customers or not. We may not need that. But for 2015, we don't have any additional wholesale water customers, and, uh, we, we need the additional revenue to offset our capital program. As this slide indicates, Evanston has the, on the right-hand side, Evanston has the lowest water rate, and again, this is just water rate. And even when we increase the water rate percent by 10%, we will still have the lowest water rate in the area. On an annual basis, customers pay currently about $211, I'm sorry, $211 annually for water, and it will go to $232 annually. The table on the left includes both the water and sewer. So, again, even though we have the very lowest water rate, we have the highest sewer rate, and that's because of that service that we're paying off on the long-range sewer program. But when you average, uh, the water and the sewer rates together, uh, Evanston winds up being right in the middle of the pack. Uh, and again, even with their proposed income or rate, we're, we're still in the middle. Uh, this would indicate that the average single-family residential home would, uh, go from paying $664 annually to $685 annually for water and sewer combined. And overall, that represents a 3% rate increase. Uh, and our need for that is, in this year in our budget, we're proposing to sell $6.1 million, uh, in, in revenue in bond. And this, we won't, we can't afford to keep selling bonds to do our capital projects. We wind up in the same situation that we are with our sewer farm where we're paying so much debt service. So, we're proposing to raise rates so that we can pay as we go for, most importantly, for the water mains that we hope to replace on an annual basis. And that, and that cost is about $3 million a year, or over. The major capital projects that we're proposing to complete in 2015 are listed above. We hope to start a, a water plant reliability improvement. And as you can see on that, we're proposing to modify our chemical feed location. Uh, we're, we're looking to replace valves that have been installed. Some of them are 50 years old, some are 100 years old, but they, they need to be replaced. And then we want to eliminate, uh, bottlenecks that are in our existing, uh, treatment design. Things have changed in design over the years, and we want to bring our plan up to those newer standards. Standpipe painting, we have two standpipes in Evanston. We had hoped to paint one this year, but the bids that we received, uh, were not attractive. So, uh, we postponed awarding that project, and we'll bid the painting of both projects next year. And because it is the two standpipes, that will have a, a huge dollar figure of, estimated at $2.25 million. We have included $2 million in our, uh, 2015 proposed budget for the beginning of treating our finished water storage improvements. Again, and there's a date wrong up there. It should be 1913, 1908. But we have the Clearwells, uh, they're under the 1913 filters and under the 1923 filters and are not structurally sound. And we also have the 1934 Clearwell that's underneath the parking lot, and the roof of that structure is not structurally sound. So, we have a, a life cycle cost analysis report that's due at the end of October. That will provide us the roadmap for how to proceed, and we will provide that to the City Council once it's available. But we would look to hire engineers in 2015, uh, get a project design and, and start the construction by the end of 2015. In the, in the third and fourth quarter is when we believe we'd start construction, and that's why that $2 million is up there. Uh, the Sheridan Road Water Main Project, uh, the whole Sheridan Road project got deferred to 2017. However, we feel that the construction season is relatively limited to, so, we're going to try to replace the water mains in 2015 and get all the underground work completed so that when the road surface work starts in 2017, it could be done within the normal construction season and get everything completed in that time. So, this is a, actually, we're looking to line the water main that's on Sheridan Road from Everson Street to Lincoln Street, and then, uh, replace the water main between Lincoln and Central, and then from Ingleside to, uh, Ridge. So, that's what that cost is for. And then in addition, we hope to do our normal one-and-a-half miles of water main replacement on various streets, and that's what the three-and-a-half million dollars is allocated for. So, those are the, the major capitals in, in the water fund next year, and why we're asking for the, showing you that we have a lot of capital improvement needs and, uh, trying to justify asking for the 10% water rate increase. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Stoneback, I have one question. When will you hear, um, you're having some consultant look at the water reservoir?
Yes, and the report is due at the end of this month.
That's the end of this month, okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members, Clerk Green, and City Manager Bob Quitz. I'm Evanda Thomas Smith, and I'm going to, I'm just walking you through some highlights of, um, Health and Human Services Department budget. Um, the initial budget can be found on page 88 of your larger document, and it lists what our mission is. Historically, the Health Department has served as a department that really was a safety net for vulnerable populations. And we've expanded that mission to make sure that we're addressing all populations, those who, um, all who deserve to live at optimal wellness and, as well as our vulnerable groups. And we do that by protecting and preserving and promoting wellness for people who live, work, and play here, and we know that we don't do it alone. We do it through creative partnerships. So, as listed on your document, you see our proposed revenues for 2015 along with our expenditures. But I want to highlight some initiatives that, uh, we want to kind of delve into with intention through the department. Um, we have orchestrated a collaborative, um, internal team to address, uh, conditions of rental housing properties that we've been made aware of down through the years, whether it's from, um, aldermanic engagement, uh, residential engagement. And some of these conditions have been deemed unacceptable over time. And so, we thought it would be best to convene a Safe and Healthy Homes Initiative. And this initiative is a collaborative agreement between, uh, communico, um, community development staff, uh, problem-solving teams to the police department as well as health. And what we thought would be best to look at addressing conditions of some of our housing properties from a three-prong approach, um, and that is, uh, focusing on inspections that we do out of the Health Department, um, as well as inspections out of, uh, communico, uh, community development. I apologize. Providing some additional education, teaching, and resources, and also licensing of those rental properties. Another initiative is we learn that through our surveillance, uh, tracking. We're required by law mandated to do active surveillance, which is that all communical diseases are reported to the Health Department. But because the numbers in ER visits and upper respiratory illness, um, influenza-like illness, and because of the high absentee rate in our district, 65 and 202, we started doing passive surveillance. What we've done is on a weekly basis, we've tracked the absenteeism of staff and the absenteeism of children in both districts, and got data from both of our hospitals and learned that a lot of our children are showing up in the ER with asthma-related symptoms, um, having been compromised by respiratory illness. And so, we, uh, initiated a new Breathe Easy program, which is targeting those children that have repeat visits to the ER and repeat absenteeism. And we're getting active surveillance from both districts and working with Erie Family Health Centers to address that issue. Because we want to see those, um, significant unacceptable high numbers of absenteeism to reduce. Um, so, that's an initiative. And this initiative is not, is not costing us anything. We just were able to look at the data differently. And, uh, because Erie Family Health Center is in town, they're, um, instrumental in addressing this issue as well. And then our, uh, another major initiative in the department is to prepare for a national accreditation through the Public Health Accreditation Board. As you know, we are one of four certified local health departments outside of Chicago in the state of Illinois, and there's an opportunity for us to have national accreditation. And what, what comes along with that accreditation is not only just funding and recognition, but it doesn't, it informs the nation of the credible work that the Health Department is doing. We have to meet certain standards. We already complete a community health assessment every five years. But now we're required to not only do the assessment, but to create an improvement plan and a strategic plan that will allow us this, uh, national accreditation from the National Body of Public Health Officials. And we're excited about doing that. We, we hope to, um, push the submit button, um, sometime mid-next year. We, we have applied for a grant to, uh, support our efforts. Uh, we did not receive the grant, but for the first time, the Health Department has been given, uh, Centers of Disease Control and Prevention Fellow. So, we will have a fellow that has joined our team October 6th for a year to help us prepare to push the send button for this application process. And we're excited about that. A new fund, uh, to the Health Department, which is called the General Assistance Fund, which is comprised of the state-mandated program to provide financial assistance to those who are eligible and entitled to that program. Um, general assistance policy, we're still honoring the state mandate, which does require some criteria for one to be eligible. And as you can see on, uh, the slide, the eligibility criteria is that an applicant must complete the documentation prior to any consideration for the entitlement program. Um, an applicant can, has to be ineligible for TANF, aid to age blind and disabled, which is another governmental subsidized program. Um, the participant must be ineligible for, um, supplemental security income. And also, our current case rate fluctuates anywhere between 180 to 100, to 200, uh, participants. And currently, we have two general assistance specialists that are managing that, uh, program. And we know that we can offer more services, um, that our participants are entitled to, and that's why we're asking you to consider the additional, uh, um, general assistance specialists through the new fund that's created in your proposed 2015 budget under the Human Services Fund. Now, the Human Services Fund was created, again, to protect Evanston's most vulnerable residents and to provide individuals and families with additional access to services to make sure that we're creating stability in the lives of those who are in most crisis. Um, but in the body of the fund, which is found on page 112 of your proposed buzz, budget, not only does it just support those who are most vulnerable, but it also looks at, um, combining, combining the Mental Health Board, uh, recommended funding, which is called Community Purchase Services, also looking at Crisis Intervention Services, which currently is our present contractual relationship, uh, with Behavioral Health Services, um, and also Emergency Assistance Programming. And then the last component of the newly-created Human Services Fund, which we're proposing, that you really consider, is the Community Action Programs. So, as you can see, you have your proposed revenues and, and expenditures. But I wanted to point out, uh, the critical, a component about the Emergency Assistance Program. It's a comprehensive effort to stabilize families who are in, uh, risk of homelessness, um, and families or individuals that need additional support for self-sufficiency. We do have guidance that governs our operations of this program, but it does require an additional component of case management. I mean, we talked about centralizing that case management in the Health and Human Services Department. It requires a component of referrals and referral tracking, not only giving Not only giving someone a referral to get resources, but assuring that they get to the resource that they need and assuring that the resource is impactful. And that's a different component. What we're used to is when we answer the phone or taking a participant, we give them a referral, but we never follow up if they got there and got the services that they need. And so through this Human Services Fund, having that additional staff support will accommodate that to make sure that we're actually assuring that families get these services that they need. And through Emergency Assistance, any additional funding that is deemed allocated to any requested participant is only approved under my authority at this time. And then I'll turn it over for Karen Danzig-Lions to discuss with you the library fund. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the City Council, City Clerk Green and City Manager Bob Kowits. Karen Danzig-Lions from the Evanston Public Library, here to talk to you about how our 2015 budget proposal will continue to build upon the important work that we have done in 2014. Work that supports our colleagues in our sister city agencies, but also engages in a much more deeper, in a much deeper and strategic way with community partners, whether it's District 65, our friends at the high school, other community-based organizations, to create safe spaces to learn within the library, to come together as a community to talk about important issues, including youth violence and race relations, but also to reach out beyond the walls of the library. We, last year in 2013, we produced more than 2,000 programs. But almost 18% of those are outside the walls and that work has expanded in 2014. With the addition of a book bike, you'll see Jill pedaling around at the produce market and on the lakefront. But we also are working much more closely to provide professional development and support to the librarians and the teachers in the schools. Our staff has already issued 300 library cards to the freshmen at ETHS. We were there to welcome the transfer students and the new students and talk to their families about the services we provide. We provide workforce development opportunities every day at the main library. But we also partner to welcome our newest citizens, whether it's through our English as a Second Language class or our citizenship classes. Regardless of your age, regardless of your interests, regardless of where you live or work in the city of Evanston, we have programs that should be of relevance and importance to you and your family. This year, we refined and revised our vision and our mission statement to further highlight the importance of working with our youngest patrons in preschool because we know through studies that one of the greatest indicators, most consistent indicators of success being defined as finding meaningful employment and graduating from high school is if you are reading at grade level when you're in third grade. And so reaching our preschool students before they even enter kindergarten, whether they're in home-based preschool or with Parks and Rec, to make sure that our children are learning and are ready to compete in a global market is something that we spend a lot of time on. And we do this with a staff of talented, dedicated and for the most part, part-time employees. And so you'll see that one of the major components of our budget increase is $87,500 for Affordable Care Act care. Our seven employees who are now eligible for that in 2015 represent more than the eligible employees throughout the rest of the city. That is something that we are supporting and we think is important. We also are part of the collective bargaining agreement with the city of Evanston and so the 2.6% wage increase is also benefiting our employees. When you look at the position count, yes, there's an increase in 3.3 full-time equivalent, but we're not adding any full-time staff in this budget. We're looking at adjusting hours in specific areas to assist with what we're doing. As we're already now going to be paying for the Affordable Care Act benefits for seven of our employees, we're proposing that we increase their hours to make them full-time. It's a lower level in terms of an investment than what we're paying for their healthcare. This will give us a greater flexibility. We're adding a 20-hour library assistant position, which is fully within our strategic plan, but it will allow our staff to engage in a much more comprehensive and careful way with District 65 to make sure that we're providing the best possible service. I'm also looking to expand our capability for our summer reading program. We love having hundreds and hundreds of children engaged with us. But with the addition of three seasonal workers, I think we can do much more in terms of the capacity to work with the children and listen to the book reports and recommend books, but also in our ability to go out and deepen our partnership with Parks and Rec. We piloted at three park locations, bringing the summer reading program to where the children are already. With the additional seasonal workers, so we won't have benefits, these are not full-time employees. We will bring them on as we need them. We can provide greater service and continue that important reading work over the summer so that there's not that summer slide in terms of the work that the students do over the summer. The budget also includes some, let's see if I can move this forward. Yes. Some much-needed capital improvement work. You'll recall that we began this discussion on how to fund capital improvements to our libraries when we were preparing the budget for this year. We come back to you again suggesting that we build some of the cost of some of this work in our operating budget, but also in the creation of a new capital fund. We commissioned with Jenny Elsner to provide us with a systematic and very complete analysis of the North Branch and the main library, which is now 20 years old. After 20 years, some systems are beginning to wear out. We wanted to have a plan that was reasonable and reasoned and a multi-year plan to address those needs and this budget does that. Finally, I call to your attention something that I'm sure you're aware of that, I'm certainly aware. We are frequently compared to neighboring libraries in terms of what we do, what we should do, what we could do. And I submit for your consideration that with some additional investment, we can do so much more. I'm proud of the work that we do now, but when you, when you look at the tax per capita, property tax support that we receive compared to our colleagues in Skokie, Allington Heights, Oak Park, Northbrook, you'll see that we still lag behind on a per capita basis. Unlike our other agencies within the city, Illinois libraries, public libraries throughout the state under Illinois library law, the primary source of funding is property tax. And that is a primary source for us as well. We continue to look for non-tax-supported areas. But this is the basis of how we are funded and you can see that there's still room to grow. It's difficult to ask for more money, but our support of our sister agencies, the support of the livability and the education of our students and the support of our seniors warrants what we feel is a reasonable request. You'll notice that it's less than the price of a new book. And we ask, we are, you're supporting this. Our board had a series of public meetings and public discussions, in five to be exact, in August and September, which were publicized. The public was welcome to attend. And we talked about these expenditures in great detail and combed through to make sure that we were justifying and proving our return on investment. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, we just hit the hour mark, a little bit past. So just as a wrap-up, I would call your attention to the schedule, especially right in the center, Saturday, October 25th. In your packet for this weekend, you will get copies of the tax levy ordinance and tax levy estimate. And that's a requirement because we need to give an estimate 20 days before actual adoption. So we're scheduling the adoption of the tax levy on, on the 24th of November and that's why we will be handing it out more than two weeks before. So it'll be introduced on that Saturday and then there'll be more than three weeks for the public to review the tax levy estimate and tax levy ordinances. So to wrap up what we are proposing for this, this coming year, we have a balanced general fund budget with reserves per policy. You may recall, we doubled the reserve policy to two months and we are slightly above that. So that allows us for continued operation, especially if we're looking at the Farmer's Almanac being correct again. They're saying it'll be a tough winter again and Ms. Robinson and her crew are planning for that. No tax levy increase for those critical areas of pension and debt service. We know what our issues are and we're doing everything we can to meet all of those issues without putting a higher burden on Evanston residents. Again, we continue this, the pensions this year. We reduced that discount slash investment rate to 6.5%. So our debt and our levies are real numbers. When you hear about a lot of other communities, we are on the conservative side now and we pass muster with Moody's and Fitch and all of the ratings agencies when they look at our debt. One other thing that we'll talk about on Saturday is reduced issuance next year. So we're trying to also reduce the amount of capital projects funded by new debt. It's not a big bite into it, but we are taking a bite into it, even though we're starting to look at Crown. There's a $1.8 million design expense for Crown. We'll save that for Saturday's discussion. And finally, this budget, as all of the departments have just shown you, forwards the City Council goals as much as we can with the resources we have. And I will turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, Marty. Thanks to everyone on the team. Again, as I started the presentation, we're very proud of this budget. I think that concluding slide really does capture where we're at, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. We're happy to answer any questions, take any requests for additional information. Otherwise, we would ask that the council return at 9 o'clock on Saturday morning. We don't anticipate being until 1:00, so our hope would be to, to be done between 11:00 and 12:00. We'll make a capital budget presentation and again, be able to answer any questions and then come back to you over the next few council meetings, hopefully wrap things up in the middle part of November.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Alderman Rainey.
Would our staff prefer that we do our budget memos in writing? Would that be more helpful?
Whatever is most convenient.
That would be convenient.
Then that's fine. And what we'll do is we'll, as we get them, we will answer them as quickly as we can. We'll have the first batch on Saturday.
I do have a couple of questions. Had the library not been a special taxing body, so to speak, would you have requested they reduce their expenditures by 3%?
Yes.
But since they weren't, they didn't get asked.
That's correct.
That's correct. One of the, one of the budget memos I want, in addition to the comparative analysis on the township expenses versus our Health and Human Services providing the services. I, I would like to know the implications for our having no net increase in our levy this year were the library not a separate body.
Alderman, does that complete your questions, Alderman Rainey? Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Yes, I'd like to know the implications for our residents in terms of the elimination of vital records. And that could be on Saturday. I mean, I don't need it now, but I'd like to know what the implications for the residents will be on that.
Thank you. I would like to know what we're paying for the animal shelter under the current system versus what we paid before. Alderman Grover.
If I could add to the vital records question, our revenue from vital records and expenses associated with running vital records.
Alderman, tenet.
Thank you. I'd like to know what the, there was mention of the Dutch elm disease inoculation being in a off year. Did I hear that correctly? I thought, I was of the impression we had it, it was a three-year cycle every, I mean, every year, just three years apart for each tree. So if you could clarify that. Also, I'd like to know the implications, or at least where the elimination of the architect position and how that impacts zoning or whatever that position was attributed to. Thank you.
Alderman, it was in, it was in our Public Works Facilities Division, so we'll, we'll tell you what that is.
Alderman Burris.
Actually, it's not a question. It's a thank you to, to Wally and to Marty for really putting a fiscally responsible budget together. I'm excited about the percentages for the pension that I think are actually on target and not dilutional. So I really appreciate that. And I see this as, as Wally mentioned, probably the best budget, the most appropriate, that is making us live within our means, other than the library deciding to raise their, their fees. But again, I'm, I'm still not sure why they're even in this discussion and since they're their own thing, I'm not sure why we're even talking about them and let them be on their own. But other than that, I think the, the budget looks great. And again, thank you to everyone for really buckling up over the past few years and coming to the notion that we are doing our best to not continue to tax more and doing the responsible thing. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple more items. I have a sense that we've been paying a larger percentage of our, our budget for police fire payments. Can, can you give us an idea of the last five years, what percentage of our budget have been accounted for by payments to police and fire pensions? If there's any way to, to also get an idea of Director McCray, our outreach staff. And, you know, we've had that discussion about it, how it's hard to show how effective they've been because it's hard to, it's hard to find things that have not happened, that have been prevented because of their good work. If there's a way that we can get a good rich explanation about the kind of work that they do, the folks they're reaching, more detail if possible. So that would be wonderful. And then if I could have a copy of the chart that was here for the 10% water rate increase, comparison to other communities where we are, where we are with our sewer rate, I couldn't see it so well.
Yeah, and it's all online.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Following up on Alderman Grover, I'd like to know who we think we're not reaching in those programs. I continue to read about issues of our youth within this community and horrible things with guns, et cetera. And I, I just want to know how, who aren't we reaching? And are we being really successful because maybe we're reaching a lot of the people who didn't need to be reached by us? And so that's, that's a big problem. I want to know also from Director Thomas's report, I, I heard about the different programs that she's talking about in terms of housing enforcement, code enforcement. But I don't understand, what are we doing differently and how is it being more effective? I don't know if it's exactly a budget question, but it's a programmatic question and I'm not quite getting it. And in my years on this council, one of the things that I immersed myself in was our housing code compliance program and felt that I understood everything about it. And now I'm very confused. So I'd like, if you, if you have a program statement that is simpler for me to understand than the report, that would be great.
Thank you. I would like some analysis, if it's possible, of building permit fees and how much they cover the damage that's done to our streets as trucks are rolling down, excuse me, to, to carry the materials to build the buildings. Building permit fees are, the way that I look at them, not just free money that has no cost. I think there's I think there's quite a cost assigned to them, and I wish that somebody could analyze what that cost is. And I agree with the library increase and strongly support it, because I think this community supports children learning to read by third grade, and libraries are an integral part of helping that to happen. And I see no more light, City Manager.
Very good. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
We've got call of the wards. Do you want to do call of the wards, or are you a mutiny? Call of the wards, beginning with Alderman Rainey.
I pass.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple comments. One is lock your car doors. We've been having a lot of car burglaries lately and people ransacking cars, so please be diligent about that. And if you see people walking down your street that shouldn't, that don't belong there, please call the police, call 911, that's what they're there for. It helps us to determine a pattern. That would be very helpful. And the second thing is also about autos. Can we slow down? And can we stop at stop signs? And can we stop texting while we're driving? You know, people are being hit on bikes, people are being hit while they're out running. Stop. Bay the speed limit. There is no reason that you are in that big of a hurry that you need to run people over while you're driving your vehicle. Just slow down. And the texting, I think we should have more enforcement on our streets about it because it is extremely dangerous and more people are going to be killed. Please pay attention.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Go report.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Go report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Go report.
Thank you. Moving right along, Alderman Wilson. Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just have one quick thing that I'd like to share with the council and as well as the other residents. A few weeks ago, a group called Our American Voices, sponsored by the McGaw YMCA and Family Focus, came and made a presentation to us about their efforts in terms of working against violence in our community. And at that same night, the Art Council people were here, and they had presented a little poster, and they were going to make posters. And Nora Dietrich called me and asked if she could help them. I made the contact. The Art Council helped them make their poster, and here tonight is a copy of the poster that they made. And they made 100 copies of this and took it to the kids, and then the kids are going to take these all over the community. So it's another effort of another agency just hearing and seeing where they could help out with some kids doing a really good thing, and this is all about texting, so that the kids will know how to text and get this information out to other kids in the community. So just very proud of it. I think it's really a wonderful effort on both the Arts Council's part, but also the kids' part.
That's a wonderful story. Congratulations to everyone involved. Alderman, tandem.
No report tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Just a final thanks to our budget staff for, and all directors, for proposing a budget to us that reflects the community's priorities and this council's goals. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.